Sorry, I was talking to our hopefully new city administrator. So I'm not ready. Just one second.
I call to order the September 2nd, 2025 Adrian City Commission meeting. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please. Mayor Heath, present. Commissioner Roberts, present. Commissioner Schwartz, present. Commissioner Banky, present. Commissioner Miller, present. Commissioner Castleberry, present. Commissioner Gauss, present. All commission members present. Can everybody out there hear us? Or do we need to be turned up? I thought the same thing. Can we get turned up a little bit? Thank you. May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support. We have a motion from Commissioner Banky with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please. Commissioner Roberts, yes. Commissioner Schwartz, yes. Commissioner Banky, yes. Commissioner Miller, yes. Commissioner Castleberry, yes. Commissioner Gauss, yes. Mayor Heath, yes. Motion carried. At this time, we will have public comment regarding items on the agenda. We will begin inside the city chambers first. When we have exhausted all public comment for items on the agenda inside the chambers, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants. Just to remind everyone, there is a three minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and place of residence. We will begin inside the chambers now.
Aaron Gethser, City of Adrian resident. So knowing the zoning ordinance would be discussed again tonight, I reached out to Adrian's local expert to hear his opinions. This is what he shared with me. I'm hitting a point where I'm pretty much convinced that the city uses the decide, announce, defend approach for every project and decision they make. A decision is made behind closed doors, then it's announced. And only afterward is the public asked for input, even though the outcome is already decided. Public input becomes nothing more than checking a box. I can't keep hurting myself bringing well researched alternatives if they aren't going to amount to anything. Because no matter how many books I read, how many workshops I attend, or what information I share, if the city doesn't care, then it won't accomplish anything. And I want to pause on that because what this person is expressing goes beyond zoning. It speaks to the heart of how the community feels. Our residents are trying hard to be involved. They care deeply about Adrian and they put in the effort to make their opinions useful. Attending workshops, readings, researching, and presenting thoughtful ideas. Yet, time and time again, they feel ignored. We keep asking for community input, and when people give us their best, most well thought out ideas, we don't give them a real platform. That looks bad. It looks like we don't care. When it comes specifically to the zoning ordinance, their concern is clear. Sticking with outdated Euclidean zoning means more car dependency, fewer housing choices, bland neighborhoods, and a weaker tax base. They believe form based codes would do the opposite, creating walkable vibrant neighborhoods, supporting small businesses, and building a stronger, more sustainable economy for Adrian. At the heart of their message is this, Adrian deserves zoning that works for people, not just for cars. I detailed the rest of the email and the opinions that he shared with me in an email to all the commissioners. Thanks so much.
Hearing no more public comment. Inside the chambers, we will now open it up to the Zoom participants regarding items on the agenda. Hearing no more public comment, we will move on to our informational discussion topics. And we are going to begin with the Bone Pool update, and our Parks and Recreation Director Jeremiah Davies will be giving that.
Mayor, Commission, good evening. Good to see you all again. Want to start with this by saying I'm kind of looking for guidance. And this is going to be a discussion that we want to kind of guide you through. Obviously, if you remember, we'll start four years ago. When I started, the commission had us move forward with a pool study. We did that with Councilman Hunsucker. So back in late 2022, 2023, they brought to you a proposal in regards to a brand new pool facility. That price tag carried roughly 12 to 20 million dollars depended on some of the things that we wanted to add. And at the time, the current commission said no. And so we moved on and the commission kind of charged me with exploring kind of restoration, if you will, kind of restoring the pool and what that would look like. And so 2023, we came up with a plan, a phased approach to one of the terms that we used was the community standard, right? That was having a clean, functional, safe pool that was open to the public and met those needs that our residents asked for. So you approved of that. And so Phase One, we completed back in the summer of 2024. And if you remember, that was the boiler and the pump from mechanical side. That was really the big issue. We had to, we'd opened late that year, had to make it free to Adrian residents only because we couldn't control the temperature. So right there is kind of listed just to show you your investment from Phase One. Phase Two, which is currently we're in right now. We started, we put a brand new roof on, and we're really focusing on the infrastructure of the building itself. So we put the new roof on back in May. And then starting at about a week and a half, Kriegoff is going to come in and finish the rest. So really addressing a lot of ADA concerns, concession stand, plumbing, electrical upgrades, as you can see, kind of the price tag on there. And so before we move on to Phase Three, part of the discussions with the former administrator when we came to you guys last year, the focus was making sure the pool is open. And we were able to do that. And so the discussion began, how do we move to Phase Three? And Phase Three is going to be essentially the complete gutting and tearing out of the current footprint of that pool. But before we get there, just to highlight, so you see that current state, we're at 54, 354 years age on the pool. And where I'm going with this is on August 8th, I got a, an email from our utilities department saying you have extremely high historical water usage. There's like, it's through the roof, something's not right. So myself, our utilities department, engineering, and I do want to preface this, you know, our, we've been working across the different departments together. It's been fantastic. There's a wealth of knowledge here in the city. And so we all kind of came together, got on site and started investigating where this potential leak, we thought, like obviously the water's through the roof, but there's nothing showing. So we spent about a week, brought a couple of different contractors in, couldn't find anything. And then last two Fridays ago, on the 15th, at about seven o'clock, it was that Friday night, I get a call from the pool manager saying Jeremiah, there's a leak coming up through the ground. So I stopped. What I was doing went to the pool and behind the slide there, essentially a fountain had created itself and coming up through the concrete joints, just pouring water, right? So what that told us then, back at the end of July, when we started getting these insane numbers through the roof, and I was contacted by utilities, is that there's a leak underground somewhere, right? So it had probably ran for those two weeks where we can see the high water usage. And then eventually it saturated to the ground to the point that the water then forced itself all the way up through the concrete. So we immediately, we had one day left, we shut the pool down, closed it down. And so we spent the last couple of weeks. Again, I want to highlight the help of DPW, Engineering, Utilities, our Utilities Director, Will Sadler, Steve Eberle. We kind of came together and started exploring every option. We brought in a couple of different contractors, ran cameras below the pool, could not come up with anything, right? And what the issue is, we know there's a leak somewhere. And so there's two main water lines that go to Bone Pool. There's one that cuts across at a 45 degree angle across the pool. There's also one that runs essentially parallel to each side. So what we've come up with and where we're going with this is we have to find this leak. We cannot open the pool next year as is, right? There's obviously a terrible leak somewhere. And so the options that we're left with at the moment is to do some exploratory digging. We have a general idea through, through a couple of different tests that we believe it's coming out of the pipe that runs along the edge of the pool. So using our utilities department, the Vector trucks, our cemetery guys, they're really good with the backhoe. We've come together and with your permission, we want to explore this. Now here's where it gets funny. The best case scenario as of right now is if we start digging up along that where we think it's at, we find the leak, utilities can come in, fix it with a new valve. We put some concrete back down. Currently, we could do that in-house. Denny Visalee, some of his guys from the cemetery are really good with concrete. They do that every day, building foundations. And Denny outside of his work here at the city has a small concrete business. And so these are things that we can do in-house. And so currently, if we were to do this in-house, right, a perfect case scenario is we dig down, we find this leak, we fix it, we have to replace the concrete that we tore up. It roughly goes at about $175, $175 a yard for the concrete and some of the rebar that has to go down. That could be anywhere from 15 to 25 yards potentially on where we're at. Additionally, some of the issues that are popping up, if you want to turn your page to the next, to the back, is our liner, right? If you can see those two photos, the liner is about five years past its life expectancy. We knew this, and I want to credit again our staff for doing a fantastic job of piecing this together. They've done an amazing job over the years doing this. But you can see where the liner is at, that back page, where you see that water behind the liner, that extends about eight to 10 feet. So that's essentially popping up all over the pool. That's due to, again, the liner being so old, it's falling apart. But we also have the concrete walls underneath starting to cave in, right? So these are all things that we knew. And that's why a couple of years ago, we started this plan to overhaul. The plan was to bid out this winter the, the Phase Three portion of this project to address the liner, the, the concrete deck, the diving well, the pool walls, some of the interior plumbing, the gutter system, filtration system. These all have to be done in unison. So we're no longer in a position where we can just kind of pick and choose small little projects to keep the pool going. This has to be done all at the same time. And you can see the current price tag that we've been told roughly to do this is anywhere from two and a half to three million dollars. And with that, we have to be prepared that we're going to lose a season. This type of, this isn't just, you know, putting a Band-Aid on this. So this is an entire gutting of that system. So the pipes, the plumbing underneath that pool were built in 1971, they opened in 72. So we're at 53, 54 years with this equipment. This is finally happening, right? The leak that we had was, was kind of unexpected. But this does fall in line with what we have to do in regards to this overhaul with Phase Three. And so what I'm looking for tonight is to discuss with you, do you want us to move forward with some exploratory digging, right? That could be from anywhere. We're estimating probably 10 grand to 15 grand, just from a supply standpoint. We can do this in-house. That's not guaranteeing we're going to find it, right? That's again, like I said, our best case scenario is we, we find it. But it also, the leak could be coming from the main water line that's underneath the pool, which obviously you'd have to tear the liner out, the bottom of that, and that's not something that we could do on our own. But with this, there's only a number of pool companies in the Midwest that even do this scale of work, and they're roughly two to three years out. So we have to have the discussion, want a funding source, if this is something we're going to move forward with at that price tag, where it's going to come from. And then also, do you want me to move forward with this exploratory drilling with the hopes that we find the leak, we fix it, keep it open for at least the next two years? And then be able to move into roughly that fall of 2027, when we think the construction could actually start, and that construction is the tearing out of the pool? So I know that's a lot. So I guess I'll just kind of open it up to you for questions and we can kind of discuss this.
So the cost you're talking about in the current state, sorry, excuse me, 175 a yard to do the concrete and supplies. You get, did you say 10 to 15?
Yeah. So, so we, we kind of measured out the area where we think, again, this is the perfect case scenario. Denny came in, DPW, Matt, we all talked this out. That's the going rate for, for the materials. So again, the actual labor could be done by city staff in-house. So that would save us a tremendous amount as opposed to trying to send this out to somebody and who knows where they're at.
And then we would need to cover the cost of a new pool liner as well, right?
Yes, yes. So, so that Phase Three, again, if you remember, and that's why I listed it there. Everything that needs to be done, again, in that, what I call the major overhaul, that's the new liner. So for example, the diving well no longer meets code. We're grandfathered in at the moment. We also know the walls are caving in. So essentially, that's why that two and a half to three million dollar price tag, that estimate, all this has to be done at the same time. The complete gutting of the pool, the tearing out of the walls, repouring the walls, putting the new gutter system in, also addressing the plumbing underneath, because again, that's at 54 years old. So that's why we finally essentially have said, we know we sprung a leak somewhere underneath the pool.
If we, if we replace, like, if we do the concrete tear out, we find that leak, we replace that, we put a new liner in, will the concrete underneath the current liner hold till 2027?
I'm not a polexer, but if you start looking at those two pictures I put on there, it's showing you the state. Like, we know this is happening all over the pool, right? We know the walls are caving in. It's toward the liner. You look at that first picture right there, you can see how bad the liner, that's not supposed to be like that, right? Or from the information that I've been able to gather, that liner is about 18 years old. They're good for usually 10 to 12 years. And again, I want to, I want to credit our city staff even well before I got here, who have been taking care of this, that there's a narrative that we don't take care of stuff. It's absolutely false. The reason this pool has lasted 54 years is because of city staff from way back when, including the time that I've been here, that actually work hard and focus on this. So that's how we've been able to kind of incrementally bring this along.
Jeremiah? Sorry. If we're going to, if we're going to do Phase Three, we wouldn't even go after this exploratory plumbing situation. We would just wait and do the entire thing over. Is that what you're saying?
So if, if the leak, so if we don't discover the leak in the parallel, in the runoff, then that tells us the leak's actually from the main water line underneath the pool. Obviously, we can do that. Like I said, our, our best case scenario, and in a perfect scenario, I'll say this, is that we dig along the water, the runoff that goes along the side of the pool. It would just tear up probably a space the size of the dais, right? We've looked down, yep, there it is. We can patch it up. If that's not the case, then obviously we know the leak's coming from underneath the pool.
And then if we're going to do a liner, if we do find the leak and we repair it, we're doing the liner. Can we go in and repair some of the, the concrete before that new liner goes in or?
No. So that would all be done in unison. So if we have to tear up the actual pool footprint itself, we wouldn't do that. That, that's going to be the major contractor. We're talking about, if you can think of the pool, there is a pipe, a water pipe. It's the runoff that runs around the pool. So we would just tear up some small concrete areas, look down with the Vector trucks, clear that, and hopefully find that leak, which is where we think it's at. That's what we've kind of, from some deductive reasoning and going through this, we think that's where it's at. We're not for sure. That's the best case scenario. So if that leak is not in that parallel pipe, that means it's actually from the pressurized leak underneath. So at that point.
But if we do find the leak, can we just do a new liner?
No. So, so, no. So the liner has to be completely, a liner is about $300,000. So yeah, it all needs to be done together.
Jeremiah, I think you spoke, they're three years out, the pool company?
Anywhere from two to three.
So actually, if all this came into fruition, that was the worst plan. We could be without a pool for three years.
Yes.
And then we're basing the costs now on 2.5 to 3 million dollars.
That could go up in two to three years.
That's what I'm saying. That's probably going to go way up too.
Correct.
Question in regards to if this exploratory work indicates that is the the pipe on the side, and that's able to be replaced, we still need to replace the liner though, correct?
Well, so as of like, so we've been able to, we've been able to, to keep the liner together. You know, what you're seeing is we've, we've kind of come up with a technique and I want to, I'm going to credit and pat staff, John Nos, former retired city employee, ran the pool for years. He's figured out a way to kind of pull that water from underneath. So what you see there, right, it's, it's, it looks bad, but we've been able to pull that water out. And this is what, so that picture that you're seeing right now was late April of this year. So we were able to pull it down, patch, patch it up, and have, we had a fantastic year. I mean, the pool looked brand new. But this is going to continue to happen. So we're able to fix the, to your, to your question. If we fix the pipe, you know, if we get lucky, we find it, utilities goes in there, fixes it. We're hoping that in the spring, when we go to open the pool again, the liner is still, still there.
So the pictures that you're showing here are from April. These are not current pictures. Okay. So the, so our staff was able to rehab the shape of the pool from where it was in April, still make this work.
Yep.
So the need, if you do the exploratory work on the side, and you do find the, the leak there, there is a good likelihood that you could rehab the liner and that we could be in operation next year, assuming you find it in that area.
Correct.
Okay. With, with minimal cost.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I, I would support moving forward with that. The, the bigger concern though, I think as Commissioner Schwartz and all of us in the back of our mind is probably thinking is where that two to, two and a half to three million or four million by the time inflation continues to whittle away at that becomes. And you know, my, my thought, as we also grapple with those inflationary numbers with other projects that the city has going on as well, and a limited fund balance. You know, I, I think of public-private partnership and is there an opportunity for, you know, a massive fundraising opportunity here to, to raise funds to help offset the, the costs of that? You know, we, we hear that people love Bone Pool and there's lots of examples of that. So if that's an opportunity for individuals to, to give or to start a specific fundraising campaign, I'm not sure if M. Parks, your professional organization, has guidance on projects like this to help move us forward in terms of grant writing or other cities that have been faced with the same. I know Tecumseh is going through this with their community pool as well, how to move forward.
So to, to, to your point, as part of M. Parks, also with, with the state DNR, as we've, if you've seen our last couple of years, we've submitted DNR passport grants. That's one of the bottom, bottom items that they will actually approve a grant for. Not saying it could happen, but essentially what they say is, we know, you know, I don't say this in a negative fashion, but we're just being honest. Having municipal pools, like taking, they say throwing money in a pot and just setting it on fire. We're never going to make money off it. There's continual cost, and we're seeing that across the country, across the state. We're seeing what, you know, Tecumseh Public Schools is grappling with. So to your point, yes, we could explore that, but going to conferences and submitting these grants every year, that's one of the things they talk about and almost laugh at, saying, we think you can find better quality of life amenities to provide for your community other than a pool.
So with you making that statement loud, is there better use of our budget to provide amenities in the recreation department for our residents than Bone Pool? That's a big statement.
I would say yes. So as, as part of the research, when I started back in 21, when this whole process began, looking at the trend in regards to municipal pools, and again, and I know we all sit here and we have experienced Bone Pool, gone there over the years. I was there as a kid. It's one of those amenities, if you will, that's starting to die off. To give you a perfect example, our usage has continually gone down over the four years I've been here. Bone Pool usage is heavy, June through probably the third week of July, by August 1st, it's a ghost town. And, and one of the things, you know, I saw in, in reading, there was an article M. Parks put out a couple of months ago, and I read it, just times have changed, right? When we say, when we all grew up, we didn't have cell phones, we didn't have technology, we went to different locations to hang out with our friends. Times have changed now, travel, sports, video games, things of that nature. There's not an overwhelming attendance with Bone Pool. And like I said, by August 1st, it's a ghost town. So that, that, I'll give you an example. August 15th was that Friday when I got the call about the leak. It was terribly hot that day and the days prior. That Friday, which is one of our long days, we had 25 people the entire day. So that's just kind of the trend of where we're, where we're going.
And do you see that in comparison to the splash pad? And there, we don't have official counts or numbers, but you know, unofficial drive-bys and so forth.
Splash pad is overwhelmingly used. Yes.
Thank you.
So what I'm hearing you say is that the reality is that Bone Pool isn't effective as we thought it was in the past, probably won't be in the future, and that we need to find alternative ways. Is that what your recommendation is?
I, I guess with, I just want to present the facts. That it's a trend that we're seeing, right? And I don't want to speak for the overwhelmingly, the community, right? I mean, if they want Bone Pool, if you, the commission chooses to us to move forward with Bone Pool, we'll absolutely do it. I just want to present the facts, you know.
I understand that. I'm just asking from your readings and what you said earlier, that it seems to be a trend that's fading.
And yes.
And it could be better used in other resources to build better parks or something else, or improve on our parks, and maybe another water pad or splash pad that's overwhelmingly used. Those are possibilities.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. I wasn't trying to put you on the spot.
No, 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 I just, I understand.
I do think though, that it's a big pill to swallow for the community, and I really do wonder if this is something that, you know, we try, we try, let's hope that the perfect scenario works. And I still really do think that we do try to find and fix the leak and start preparing the community if we think it's too much, and we think this is not being used enough, and we think that it's just the price tag is so, it is just too astronomical. At least if we can limp it along for a couple of years to start preparing the public, like we're still open, but we, let's start planning, like it's not going to be here, like, you know, if that's the way we go, I think, I think it's worth the shot to at least try. I think it's an even harder pill to swallow if we just all of a sudden don't have it. I think at least if there's warning and there's, and that heads up, then we can start to move in that direction.
And one thing I could, and I, we're still pulling the final numbers from an operational standpoint from this year. We've been working on it the last few days now that we're moving into September, we're going to be able to pull all the reports from our revenue and expense standpoint, and I could provide you a report here in the next few weeks. And I'll get with, with Chad, he's coming at a great time, but I can roughly tell you right now, after all the revenue went through expenses, and I'm going, working with, with Nathan, from an operational standpoint, we always know that we're going to lose money with the increase of wages, the chemicals, all those things, we're operating in the red at about $70,000 at a loss. Right? And so we're, the revenue that we generate, you got to think, that's from our Bone Pool memberships, concession stand, we make after, after we pay for everything, we make about four grand in concessions. We make about $7,000 off of the YMCA for their rental of the pool, five days a week, parties and things of that nature. So I, I believe we're doing just, we're doing everything we can to generate revenue, right? We have set hours for the public and private groups and stuff like that. So there's really, you know, we can't obviously run that 24/7, you know? So we have the pool, it opens early in the morning for a morning swim. We immediately move into swim lessons, and then by 12:30, we're open to the public. And then from that, that 8:00 AM to 11:30, we have the wave runners in there. So the pool is being utilized, right? It's just one of those things, these things don't make money. And so that's the trend that we're seeing, that costs are skyrocketing across the board. So we're just, this is the reality of where we're at.
Jeremiah, how many people in, this is wave runners? I mean, that's a pretty popular thing around here.
Correct. There's about 100, about 100 swimmers, 120 swimmers. Correct. There's about a hundred, about a hundred swimmers, 120 swimmers.
Mayor, Mayor. Jeremiah, if we're operating every year at a 70K deficit, we put 80 in last year for phase one. Have we, um, phase two is $350,000. That's a big investment if we're going to change our mind. And I don't know how far, I know it says in progress and I don't know how far we are in that investment or, or how much we, I just, if, I think that's a very big investment.
Yes.
Just to not find the leak, say, we have to tear all this out. This is going to be a $3 million to $4 million project. And we just blew, I say blew, I think it's, let me not say blew, that's, that's bad. Recreation is an investment of taxpayer dollars and quality of life, right? And, and sometimes that operates at a deficit. And, and I think you do a great job at making sure that we don't operate those things at too much of a deficit. But I, I don't want to invest $350,000 to next year, say, this isn't going to work. Does that make sense? I, I mean, I don't want to, I don't, I don't want to gamble with taxpayer dollars.
So to, to give you some perspective, so we just put the roof in, in May. I want to say that was roughly 40,000. The next phase, which is going to be very much focused on a lot of ADA issues. Just kind of put like I put in there, wiring the, the pipes. We had a big, we had a pipe burst last year, right? So the building's not insulated. So the entire place was flooded and we spent weeks cleaning that out and rehabbing it back. So this, this next phase and this money is essentially going towards the infrastructure of that building. It's all the, the wiring, electric, like I said, it's stuff to keep the building open and functional.
And is there something we can use that building for should this not go well?
Right.
Like
Sure.
Long-term? That, that's my question, I guess, and that's something I need to.
And I guess that, that's kind of to piggyback upon that, I think is that a leapfrog situation of if we have done some work that's here in place already, as we transition potentially, the use of this building for something that's aligns with higher end activities that have more engagement. I mean, Sunday I was out at Heritage Park and there are a lot more than 25 folks over at the, the pickleball courts using that and using the trails. So is there something there that can engage the community in that location, using that building? In terms of, you know, is there a splash pad there, but also a changing room? Is there another opportunity that, that, that building can be used for as one potentially goes out or comes in? I think this is a great opportunity. When's your next, uh, what is it? What's the official term for your pool plan or for your recreation plan?
Oh, the master plan?
Yeah.
It'd be next year.
Okay.
We're, we're going to start working on it over the winter.
Yeah. So is this an opportunity for community input? Where we can kind of be guided by that, move forward with the, the exploratory work to see where that is and hopefully have that guide some of, some of this is, as well.
Jeremiah, I, I remember when we first started talking about this a few years ago. It's a little bit of chasing our tails and, and one thing breaks and two more things get fixed and another one breaks. And it's a, it's a strange merry-go-round that none of us want to be on. It pulls on our heartstrings because most of us remember what it was like to have a pool in our cities. And we continue to think that, that was wonderful for us, it should be wonderful for them. And it's not, we're paying about, what, a thousand dollars a day to be open?
Yeah.
Pretty much.
Yeah, yeah.
70,000, 70 days open. Uh, that's a hundred dollars an hour to have a pool. Uh, I don't know whether that's ever going to be worth it, ever for us. Trying to renovate or rebuild a pool that is aging so quickly. Everything is old in that place. And the things that are being repaired, I agree with everyone else that's been speaking. I really believe that we could retrofit that kind of location and building into a new, something different. Something else could happen there. And we just have to talk to the community and see what, what their feelings are. Because it's, it's a major amount of money and it'll continue to be a major amount of money for as long as we continue to have that pool.
And I, I would say that if we look at the, the life of pools in the Adrian community, Drager's pool was transitioned into the Boys and Girls Club. So the number of children that every day go to not the pool at Drager, but to the Boys and Girls Club. Vastly different, great programming that takes place there. When we look at the closure of the Springbrook Middle School Pool, same thing is now a choir program and a STEM program. And, you know, we had the solid program with the pool at the high school. So is there, you know, a new opportunity to move forward with, with planning as we transition from this?
If we transition from this, let's be clear about that. This is an if still. So I made a bunch of notes. My thought would be to try and fix it this year and have it open for next year and allow the community time to process this discussion tonight. And let's listen to them and see if this is something they really want or not. And they will let us know if they want to pay for it or not. And we need to, to listen to them to see if this is an amenity that, that we want to keep having for our children and our adults. I've used it too for lap swim. Amenities aren't out there from the city to make money. It's okay that it's not making money now. Should it be losing $70,000 a year? That's, I guess, up for debate. I get, my thought would be we get a small committee together of city staff and maybe construction experts and community members. And take a look at what our options are, is, are there bonds that we can do to re, to do a repair? Can we set aside our marijuana money for five years to do the repairs? Can we set aside the gas, well, money, gas and oil money? Is there a, is there an opportunity to third the Bone Pool? And, because it's quite large and maybe just only have a lap pool, a smaller, a smaller footprint and create just a, a smaller pool, which would be a boatload, lot, lot less money and a lot, and a lot easier to take care of. And we could maybe even put a splash pad on the other side, something like that. Take away the, you know, some of the, the slides and bring down some of the cost too. So, so at least have the other buildings. City has done necessarily, but we have offered a free splash pad. And so some of the people that have come to the pool over the last several years, no longer come to the pool. They go to the splash pad to cool off. So we've, we've created some competition there. The center has created competition. Their outdoor recreation pool area, when did that open? Probably four or five years ago. Well, it, did it take away many of our patrons? So there is more competition and that's what happens with competition. We either rise to the level or we cut our losses. And so I, you know, I think there's some ideas that we need to look at. And before we make decisions on just saying, we're not going to have a pool anymore. But my opinion would be to try and fix it and at least have one more season and at least give the community time and us time and us time to figure out, is there a different way? Is there a path forward for this that we can still have a city pool?
Jeremiah, when we look at this, I don't know how far along you are on phase three, but if we do the digging right away, we get to phase three, we find out that's not where the problem is and we don't know where it is.
Then we're not open next year. And then we're probably down two to three years. Because at that point, if we stuck with the plan, excuse me, of this phased approach, we would be bidding out the job this winter. So our architectural firm, who I've been working with and speak to on a weekly basis, they've essentially have the conceptual drawings together. But what they have to do is take those drawings and then give it to an actual pool contractor, who actually then puts that into bid specs that can be read by those doing the actual work. And most of those companies are, there, there's only a handful of them. So some are turning away work. So this, this isn't an easy process. And again, from, and, and, and also it's, I don't, not saying this is funny. This is just to push perspective, a lot of these companies are saying they are still affected by the COVID shutdown, that they lost two years of projects. And so that, and again, this is a specialty construction. And so losing two years has just set them back, right? So everyone that we reach out to and try to work with is simply saying, you know, we're two to three years out.
How much does it cost an average home and would you say to keep the pool up and then to put the $3 million in? Based on taxes, did you have any idea?
I, I don't.
Because I'm just trying to say that we need to break it down so the public are totally informed. You're paying this much. Do you believe in this pool? Do you not, given that you have, as you spoke, we have the family center and their splash pad and their pools are open and, you know, what is the value keeping this pool when we have the high school pool? I think pools are like ice rinks, you can't get time in them. I think they're booked pretty much all the time. So I think that's, that's a major issue with this if we don't have the pool open too. But I think $3 million out of a general budget, that's, that's expensive.
I think it's also if we do the repair, try the repair and it doesn't work, we'll be back here again, having a bigger discussion.
Yes. And so if you look on there, so falling in line with where our utilities department's at with their projects and along with DPW, if you want to move forward with this, September 9th is the earliest that they can get over there. So that week would be a heavy focus down there and we, we would know for sure that week if that line is broke there. Like this isn't very difficult because we, we have the, the run. We know where we think we want to dig, so we can do that. So I could very easily be back here probably at the next meeting if, and if not the very next one after that. So this is going to happen quickly if you want me to move forward with the exploratory digging.
Well, I, I think that you should move forward with that and come back. But if there's a way to halt the phase two where it is now, we've got a new roof. Do we have to do anything else before we find out how big a problem is? I, I, I just don't like the idea of spending $350,000 on something we not, may not push forward in a year or two.
Yeah, well, we've already spent some of that, we've already put the roof on. But also from, you know, talking about, say, say we make the decision that we're going to shift gears in a couple of years and that building needs to be used for a different, all these things need to be addressed, the wiring, the plumbing, again, that's all. These are things that have to, have to be done to that building regardless whether or not there's a pool there or we're using it for a different amenity project usage. These are the things, like I said, the, 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 the electrical in that place is terrible. The plumbing's terrible. There's ADA things that need to be brought up. So, and that's supposed to start next week.
But the question is, if we know, well, first of all, if we discovered that's not the problem that, that we're, that we're looking at there. It's not the, the best case scenario. Is there any time pressure on us doing the rest of phase two now? If we may not even be open next year?
I, I would defer to our city attorney, we've signed the contract, we've already paid some of the money. I don't know how that would work, how.
I don't, I don't know the status of it, but if we've bid it out and awarded it, I doubt we can stop it.
When we look at bridges, do we have a total, in terms of what estimated costs of bridges along the Quanis Trail was? And is that an impact to us as the city or is that the larger Quanis Trail authority?
Eight of the 10 bridges are in the city. And the report was 2024, helped me Director Davies. I think the estimate was about 1.5 to 2 million on repairs, which, you know, that's already old. So I think we can expect it to be more than that.
Okay, thank you.
I'd be interested in seeing us try to repair it.
So what I can do is I can move forward on September 9th and then at the very next meeting, I can bring you a report as to how that went.
See if everybody else wants it.
And open the conversation.
Yeah, I think that's great because I know there's an extra Monday in September too, so that we won't be meeting. There, I think it's three weeks and after the 15th. So if you could have that by the 15th for that meeting.
For sure.
I think that would be great and it sounds like you can, but that
I can do that.
I think that would be great.
Do you need a motion for us to move forward? I don't know if the cost is
No.
High, okay.
Well, you're, when you talk about spending, you're not talking, you're, you're not bidding something out, you're doing the work yourself.
Or this This exploratory digging we'd be doing in-house and then the concrete, we have a, a, I think Rock Hard is our current contractor that we have on bid. So we would
So we wouldn't have to bid anything.
No, correct, correct.
You don't need a motion.
Well, this was fun.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We knew it wasn't going to be.
We really appreciate the information.
Hard, hard discussion to have and put it forward. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other items for discussion or information?
Before Jeremiah sits down, can we have him give us any updates on the Civil War Monument Restoration Funds? And assuming that there's been no progress on that, is there any recourse or any direction the city should take? For the, I guess I'll say misuse of those funds or the lack of any movement with those funds? From someone who's purchased a brick and invested in that, does that now become a, a case of fraud?
So since our last meeting, I've met twice with Casey Bolton, Dave Loop, who were part of the committee that started that. I've kind of exhausted all options in trying to say, let's move together. Let's actually put the money towards the restoration, which was the actual intent of the monument. I even wrote a letter, a draft for them to potentially send out to the donors saying, hey, you know, times have changed, things have changed, circumstances have changed. If you're okay with the money going towards the restoration and not the bricks, you don't have to do anything, but if you do have some objections, please feel free to reach out. So I drafted this letter, brought it to them, doing everything I can to kind of help this move along. And, you know, I can't force a private citizen with private funds to do anything. And so it's, it's gone nowhere.
So the city of Adrian is not involved in this. This is a question of the donors and the private citizens who put the program together. The city of Adrian can't do anything about it. If they feel that there's fraud, they, they can request an investigation of that, but that's not something that the city will be doing. And I would not, I would advise our police chief to not handle the investigation, but to send it out either to the county or the state police. Because there's at least a sense from the public that the city of Adrian is involved and the city is not involved. We are, we are not involved in this at all. The restoration, yes, the collecting of the funds, the city has nothing to do with.
And is there any, so as we look at budget processes and the fact that six, seven years ago, we were presented or the commission at the time was presented with civil war monuments that were being eroded and degrading. And nothing has taken place to advance that. Is there an urgency from now, the property that we own, the monuments, to restore that? If this group of individuals are not going to come forward with the funds to actually do the restoration?
I think that's a great question. It's a budget question. I don't have a legal opinion.
I think we need to move forward with some kind of restoration. I it's. It's not going to get any better unless we do something now. And the fact that the last seven commissions or whatever it is have been kicking the can down the road. I don't think we can do that any longer. Whether we have the 18 or $20,000 that the group is holding on to. I we need to do something.
Well, I think a. Not a local constituent, but someone that was a constituent of Adrian grew up here emailed us this week. And has some questions and about the amount of money that they invested and. It has been eight years since they donated that money and I believe they said that they have not been. Notified. By anyone since 2020, 2022, 2020, 2020. So even reaching out. To the fund holder, they have not had any luck getting any answers. So. I do believe the city needs, we as a community need to step in and do something with the park. I I can't. Speak for the people that donated money to the private citizen, holding it in a private account. That that's.
Somewhere in this.
Acceptable, quite frankly, but.
Somewhere in this process, it needs to be clear that we are two separate. Groups entities that are that are moving forward on this project are not, one of them not moving forward. And I think that somewhere we need to be clear that we are very interested in in continuing to work on this project. But it's muddying the waters with with people coming to us and asking, where's my money? I don't know. Don't know that. I don't have an answer for that. It's a it's a private individual who raised that money. And I think we need to continue to go forward. This project. Would it make sense for us? Because when we received the most recent presentation, it was. A quote from. From them. So would it make sense for us to, you know, go through the bid process of what the restoration would look like so that we can have? An amount that we can judge based on what we were asking for in terms of a restoration.
Yeah, exactly. And to piggyback Commissioner Banky on that. So when this whole process started, I reached out to the state of Michigan. There's a division that works with this. And so. Their point and and when we say restoration, what does that exactly mean? Right? We have a a permeable. Piece of stone that's there. It's almost pushing 200 years old, right? We also have some copper brass plates. That are on there signifying the names of of those veterans from the Civil War from from our area. It's oxidizing, right? This this material sits out 365 days a year in the sun, rain, sleet, snow. So there's a lot of interpretations on what does restoration mean? Right? I was just in Gettysburg two years ago and a lot of the monuments there are. Green. You can't even read them. They're they're starting to fall apart. So if you actually go and look at that monument. It it's in really good shape. Obviously, yes, it's starting to oxidize a little bit, but. Structurally, it it's it's pretty sound, right? So I guess we need to be clear when we're saying we'll restore it. What does that mean? Right? That's a that's a piece of stone there. Are we just going to slap concrete on it? Are we just going to clean up the brass plates? And I think that if you'd like. I can read out, reach out to the experts and really get kind of an opinion on what when we say restoration, what does that mean? Right? Is is that just working on the the oxidation on the brass copper plates? Or are we talking about the entire thing? But again, that's a piece of stone. There's only so much that you can do to that. So I think it makes sense if you'd like for me to move forward to actually bring in some experts. And again, this whole process, when I have asked this question to the private group, what do you mean by restoration? What's the plan? What are we actually doing? I don't get anything.
I think some of it too is the cannon bases because aren't they giving away as well?
Yes, but that's.
That was excluded from the quote. So the quote that was shared with us.
I know, but that's also.
That right also becomes an issue.
You know, I'm looking at from the point of view that. This fundraising project started six, eight years ago, whatever. What if it had never started? We still have an obligation to maintain our parks. We still, if the restoration is our responsibility, just like. Every other park in the city. So whether we get the $18,000 or we don't, or whatever happens there on the side. I still feel like we need to move forward. Find out how much it's going to cost, what restoration means. And then make a decision. But as other people here have told us that. You know, this should have, this could have been done years ago. You know, there are, there is a public opinion that we do keep kicking. The the can down the road and we don't take care of a problem as they're, we we don't do. We don't do maintenance. We have deferred maintenance. We wait until. It's absolutely can't be put off any longer. And and I'm not, I'm not saying that that you, you know, you haven't been in the job that long. But I, you know, that that is a reputation that we have. We need to maintain. Our assets. And I I don't think in this particular case, we've done a great job at it. So my ask would be. Get the estimates, find out what restoration means, bring that back to us and ask us for approval.
But but if you could include the cannons in there as well, that would be great. Thank you.
I I think that the stone is built around the monument and I. You know, Congress, US Congress entrusted that. The pillar and those cannons to us in 1870. So. We. Should do our due diligence. I I agree. We need to figure this out. And I I hope you can find something. I know that I believe that they had talked to Flatlanders. Is who they got their original quote from.
But there's never been, you're absolutely correct. And that's where I think.
Yeah, but if.
There's never a plan or understatement or explanation of what that actually means.
Yeah, that's important. You get the explanation of what really we're talking about.
And I I think that if if we go through this and people want to use those funds that they donated, they should get those funds back and they can use them to. Help us in that process. I mean, it's just doing the same thing, just a different route, right?
And that's what I wrote that letter when I presented it post our our last meeting at the start of the summer and trying to help the group and say. The original intent was for the restoration of the monument. That the bricks were just a caveat to that. Things have changed. We we passed a a resolution where we're not. Putting businesses and people's random names inside the park there around that Civil War monument. So I wrote that letter kind of stating, trying to help this group move along and say, hey. You know, if you donated money and you're okay with them moving forward. Don't say anything. You don't have to reach out and there's no communication. If you have an argument or something against it going towards the monument, which. I don't know why you would, then please reach out. And so I presented that and I've done everything I could to help this group along and it's fallen on deaf ears.
I know. I know you have gone above and beyond on this one, Jeremiah. Thank you for all that work. I I'm, I hope you can find. Someone to help you with the.
Yeah, I can. Yeah.
And I I will dig in and look for some funding as well.
Okay, I'll get to work on that.
Moving on to the consent agenda. May I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Banky. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Motion carried.
For our regular agenda under ordinances, ordinance number 25 dash 005 is the second reading and consideration of an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances. Chapter 10 Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 5 Vacant Buildings. May I get a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Or. Are there any commissioner discussions or? Comments? We have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Ordnance number 25 dash 006 is the second reading and consideration of an ordinance to repeal and replace the existing zoning ordinance. And map being chapter 106 of the Adrian codified ordinances in its entirety. May I get a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Support. Are there any commissioner comments or discussion on this?
I would just state from our our last meeting. Commissioner Watson came forward and shared that this is a step in in the right direction. It may not solve all of our problems that. Have been outlined in relation to zoning, but it does take take us in great strides forward and. Mr. Jakovitz is here tonight. And at least an opportunity for us to to thank him for the amount of work that he did with the rest of his committee above and beyond our consultant. When they exited or were asked to exit. So thank you for that, Mike, and thank you for bringing this this forward and. I'm not sure if it's going to be two, five, 10, or hopefully not 20 years, the the next rendition, which takes us even further ahead. Will the commission at that time, I'm sure will be optimistic and enthusiastic to receive it as well. So just as we are to receive it tonight.
Speaking as the commissions are up, the city commissions representative on the planning commission, I want to recognize as you did. Mike and and Brian's hard work on this thing. It's been a long, arduous process. But I think we know. That even what we have now is not going to be perfect that we, the planning commission will be coming back to the city commission. Over some period of time, hopefully it's not next month, but in in some cases, planning commission will be coming back to amend this this. This ordinance. So that should be the expectation that we have. Hopefully. You know, we can, we can gather a few things together at one time and amend it once and then. A year from now, maybe make some other discoveries, but we know it's not perfect. And it'll never be perfect, but we can address problems through amending the ordinance as they come up.
I I would agree. It's not perfect and and we can make changes as we learn. From it and learn from our community on what they want. But I do appreciate as someone who sat on the planning commission for a while. That it is much more user friendly. It, the old one was very taxing to find information, very, very taxing. And I've had a conversation with our community development director that. We are going to make great strides on getting the information on our website so that people. The regular public will be able to find the information. Instead of us trying to find it for them or us having to go to someone from the planning commission or someone from a city staff. So hopefully. The public will be able to find the information that they need.
We have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Under resolutions. Resolution R 25 dash 053 is from administration. It is a resolution to approve an employment agreement for the city administrator. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt the resolution to approve the employment agreement with Chadball.
Support.
Is there any discussion or commissioner comments? We have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Banky. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Motion carried.
At this time, we will now have a public comment. We will start inside the city chambers first. When we have exhausted all public comment inside the chambers, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants. Just to reiterate, there is a three minute time limit and for the record, please state your name and place of. Residence. Sorry about that. And after and then we also want to just make sure and also reiterate that. We will not comment back. This is a time for the public to comment and let us know your thoughts and if you would like. Something may be addressed in the commissioner comments, but if not, you are always free to approach us after the meeting as well and have discussions with us. We will begin now.
Gail Dunaway, Adrian, Michigan. I would first of all, like to thank all the city workers. Who have been diligently working on Elm Street. The nightmare is gradually going away. Particularly our utility guys. They were out there in a pouring rain, putting in the last leg of copper piping. So my house is now lead free. As far as watering input. Secondly, Jeremiah. The pool isn't the only place that's leaking. We have a terrible leak on Butler Street. Again, we had a horrible one two years ago. It went on for close to a month. Called this morning again about 8:30. Somebody was there by night, at least spray painting. So it's all marked off, hopefully taking care of that. So I would. Suggest or recommend that maybe Butler Street, at least from Ormsby up to the fairgrounds might be the next street project because. That street is sinking. It is sinking. It looks like the Oregon Trail, like some Constaga wagons have gone down because I mean, you can see. The troughs down and you can see how many times it's been patched throughout the. Lastly. Reported to Lisa's assistant, even brought in pictures. I have more today. Of a house right there on the corner of Elm Street and Butler. I'm not going to give you the address. I'll show you the pictures afterwards, but. I'm five foot two and shrinking. The weeds are taller than me and they're growing and this really needs to be taken care of. Many of us residents were elderly. We've been in our homes 30 plus years. And we're close to taking measures into our own hands. It's a vacant house. It does have a court order. But you know, move this stuff aside and get in there with a threshing machine or whatever, because it's going to take some major. Work to get this taken care of. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Sue Allshouse and I'm a resident of the city of Adrian. And I just want to bring up on behalf of our neighborhood by the college, we we wish to thank Commissioner Gauss for stepping in during this holiday weekend. To help us with a water leak that was leaching into two of the homes on Stratford, right near the old entrance into the Adrian College Dome. I apparently one of the neighbors had called the city and had left number, you know, left a message and. Was concerned about how fast this water was moving and. I just decided to get ahold of Gordon and say, you know, can you help us? And his quick response and willingness to put our community first. Was really appreciated and didn't go unnoticed. So thank you. Fire and utilities responded and repairs were ultimately made today. There was some attempt to work on it over the weekend. And it really did look like a swamp when they got to it today. So I just want to thank you for that and recognize your efforts. So. Thank you.
Nancy Pello, Adrian. I just wanted to thank the city workers, the Rock Hard, all of you commissioners and the mayor because. And Lisa. Because Greenlee Street is getting cleaned up and also they're putting in new sidewalks on Greenlee Company in St. Joseph. And I'm excited. Thank you.
Keith Miller, City of Adrian. 241 Finch Street. I have called twice and left two messages at that at that address has a water leak. It's coming from the valve. It's coming from the valve, which is in the driveway. And I first called, I believe, on July 26 or something like that. So it's been leaking for well over a month. I've never gotten a call back from whoever I contacted there because I, they didn't answer the phone like normal. They just let it go to the, you know, email or voicemail. So I left two messages and nothing's been done. I went by it today. It's still leaking. Now, if you guys don't care about the water being wasted and it doesn't care, you know, nobody cares about it, then why do we have to pay a water bill? I mean, obviously, the city doesn't care about it. So why would they care if we pay a water bill or not? Why should we? I mean, it's been leaking for a month and a half at least. But nobody seems to care. Nobody's fixed it. And I'm sure the property owner's probably called too. Because it's going right down. It's brand new driveway right from the valve. So and it's not his fault. It's got to be the city's fault. It's a valve. As far as the bone pool, I say keep the building, scrap the pool. Because if you dig around there and you don't find that leak there, hopefully you don't fill it full of dirt, then pour on brand new concrete to to, you know, make the the cost even more that we're just going to tear apart anyways. So why put any more money into? It's like buying an old car that isn't worth nothing. You put $10,000 into it to find out the frame's gone, so you junk it out for 50 bucks. So why do it? Why put any more money into it? Get rid of it. Let's put up a go, you know, a go kart racing track or something like that, that the kids race with some electric go karts. Charge them $10, you know, for 15 minutes or whatever. And they'll have more fun. They put a splash pad out there and some other stuff. There's plenty enough room, but just get rid of that pool because it's like putting lipstick on a pig. It ain't going to do you no good. So, I mean, it's just a waste of money. And we wasted more money on that than any other thing in the last few years. So why keep wasting money on something that's not making you any money? It's not even good business sense. If anybody's a business owner here, you'd know if your business isn't making money, you're not going to be in business much longer. So why, why do it? And as far as the Monument Park, somebody better do something about them cannon carriages before some kid gets on that cannon and it collapses and kills them. All them cannon carriages out there are bad, and they ain't nothing but four by fours, and they could fix them for about 100 bucks a piece. But it's just lack of maintenance. It's been that way for years in that same park. Thank you.
Aaron Cheshire, City of Adrian resident. Speaking of Monument Park, there is going to be another community cleanup under the name Our People, Our Parks. And this week, we are going to Monument Park. It's on Sunday from 12 to 2. Be a great opportunity for people to come see what everyone's talking about with the restoration needed at Monument Park. Absolutely. All of the commissioners and any city staff is invited to come. And although I also wanted to thank the Parks Department and Jeremiah specifically, because the last two events, we've not had a ton of litter or trash to pick up at all because it's been very, very clean. So thank you for that. And also, last but not least, congratulations, chief. You can finally rest. And congrats to our very excited for the new admin.
We will now open it up to the Zoom participants. Oh, sorry, just a minute. Zoom participants, wait one second.
Hi, my name is Ernest. I'm a city resident of Adrian, County of Illinois. There is only three issues. One is a criminal issue that goes on constantly at Air Street Park, which is basically on the same grounds where kids, you know, play splash pad, whatever. And nothing is done. That's a safety hazard. Second, the city sidewalk, which is a public easement, which is owned by the city, in certain areas that I walk and evaluate is a safety hazard which need to be fixed. Could God forbid if a elderly person that's walked down the sidewalk trips on that messed up sidewalk? It won't be their fault. It'd be the city's. Another thing is another thing is yes, the homeless shelter. Yeah, that's what it is. The homeless shelter. I talked with a few homeless people to get what's going on in there. The shelter is kicking people out for no reason. And it's ridiculous. They had a couple overdose, a couple radiations, psychiatric radiations at the shelter. So something to be done with that. Instead of kicking people off for no reason, give us some help, more resources. Instead of kicking them out where they got to sleep in woods. Second issue of, I lost count, but the ordinance for a park, y'all need to take down that sign. Because what do you, what do you expect people to sit on a lovely day to smoke or to drink? It's outside. It's public. Allow them to smoke, allow them to drink, and take a little pep nap. It's beneath the sky. It's not in a building. Well, you can't drink in most, most areas inside buildings, like the courthouse, whatever, you can't drink or library, you can't drink. In the connections, you can't drink or smoke. The only option they have is to smoke and drink outside. Who are they hurting? So do the right thing and remove that ordinance. Because y'all ticketing people who don't have income. We're just going to lock them away. Oh, you ain't pay your ticket. That's what I'm saying.
I forgot. Sorry. Judith Hammerly, Adrian. People have been talking to me when I've been outside now, when we can be outside and it's lovely, about the noise of cars and motorcycles. And people going by the demonstrations that happen weekly too, and just blowing black smoke out of the back of their vehicles. And I was, I was over at Mammoth Buffett Celebration the other night. And the motorcycles going by there, you just couldn't speak at all. And as I understand it, if you have a motorcycle and you're going downtown, the reverberation of the sound off the buildings is wonderful. And that's something that people really like when they're on their motorcycles. I don't like it at all. And I don't know if there's a sound ordinance that this is violating or a pollution ordinance from that black smoke that that might be violating. So I will wait and ask about that. But just so you know, other people have talked about this with me too. Thank you.
We will now open up public comment to the Zoom participants. Before we go into commissioner comments, would our soon to be in, in, he was voted in tonight, obviously, the the agreement was made tonight, but I I wanted to know, would you like to speak? Chad, I thought you, I thought you looked like you wanted to. So I wanted to know if you wanted to speak tonight before we go into commissioner comments. By the way, he will be starting September 22. So we will still have Vince at the next meeting. So he has to do one more meeting with us. I know he's really happy about that. But we do thank you again, Vince, for all you've done. So we will have Vince still at one more meeting before Chad takes over. Thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you, you know, for all the listeners and everyone that's going to watch this, the citizens of Adrian. I'm just humbled. And thank you again for the commissioners for this opportunity. This again is a destination. I think this is a great place. I'm, I can't wait to get in the building, in the community, working day to day, working with you and understanding how I can help and facilitate the city's business. And I'm just excited, very excited for myself and my family, take this next step personally in my career. But to be a part of Adrian's always been a goal. I just didn't know how it was going to work. And this is exceptional opportunity. So thank you. Thank you.
Welcome, Chad. Thank you. Are there any commissioner comments?
Do have several announcements coming up. Taste of Lenaway, a great opportunity to support the incubation process that comes out of the Armory. We do have students that are coming from Moriyama, Japan. That will be October 24 through the 29. And we will have Downtown Day of Adrian with those students on the the 29th with lunch. And then we will be going up to Tecumseh Middle School for their presentation to the community. Then Toys for Tots kickoff is November 1, and that goes through December 20. And one last community project, if any commissioner wants to get involved with on November 12 is Project Connect. It's a great opportunity to connect with those that are most in need in our community with the resources that are out there. And we provide lunch for residents, food, health screenings, and also connections for veterans benefits as well through the Project Connect COC Subcommittee. So if you're willing and able to to volunteer, feel free to reach out to me and we can get you signed up. You know, we, the city has caught a lot of grief about the construction and things like that with the roads and things. But I want to say they look good. And I want to say it wasn't the city. It was, you know, it was Michigan Department of Transportation. But one thing I'd like to say is, one of the good things that came, we made this city a better access for our handicapped and disabled people. So while it may have been a convenience for us, think about all the new curbs, the new entryways that make it easier for the disabled and handicapped people in the city of Adrian.
I do have to say it was painful while they had Broad Street closed, but that's the way I come to city chambers and to city hall. And that over there is a much, it feels much safer and it's just easier to navigate now that they've changed it over there. So I do appreciate that Maple front street. I mean, sorry, that Broad Street, Front Street. It used to be a disaster. I felt like I was always very afraid there. And now it's, it's, it's much, it's much easier to navigate. So I am grateful for the state for doing that. I just wish they hadn't decided to do the project when school was starting for all the schools and everything else was going on. But yes. May I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.